This conference will now be recorded.
Now we can do a couple of things. It may be. Oh.
Who are you waiting for?
Oh, Dave Nolte would be interested, but that's okay. We have, we can jump ahead if we need to.
Can I look at the M O V? Want me to send you my comments?
Yeah.
I haven't either real long. I just kind of.
Yeah.
And then do you want me to be, tell Gail to put me on that call for Monday? If you're going to discuss?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. All right, then I'll send you mine and then you want to put up. Yeah, then I'll send it back with our comments.
Okay.
Yeah. Oh, I figured I could.
Say what?
I figured I could look at it twice.
Yeah. That's probably one that I'd do too.
Yeah.
Good evening, Chief. Chief of the thesis joining us on the telephone.
Okay. Good evening.
There he is. He is with.
Good evening.
Yeah, thank you.
You just will stay standing, Chief. April 26th council meeting, call order, would you please stand for the place of allegiance?
On the place of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item on the agenda, we consider approval of the consent agenda items approved minutes from April the 12th to 2021 and statement of the bill paid in amount of 134, 49508.
Mr. Mayor, I make the motion to approve item number one on the agenda to consider approval of consent agenda items.
Second.
It has been moved and second to approve the consent agenda with a clerk please call roll.
Adams.
Yes.
Kayhar.
Yes.
Malat.
Yes.
Shriver.
Yes.
Stites.
Yes.
Thank you. There will be no item number three reset going into executive stations. We'll move on to the next item on the agenda. We'll hear presentation on.
We have our questions, comments.
Oh, I'm sorry. Request for comments from the public, I'm sorry. Did you approach the podium and give your name and address and you have three minutes?
Yes, good evening. My name is David Stride and I live at 1396 South 104th Street. I just wanted to, to come and speak my mind and then I gotta go because I, I don't have a whole lot of time this evening. The weather's nice out and I gotta get some mowing done, so. The, I just wanted to talk about the, the development that's going on up north. And, and it seems to me like, like maybe there, there's kind of two different plans. I know Bonner has this, this idea that they, they want to do some sort of manufacturing or warehouse up in that area. And I know we kind of have our own plan with, with the, the hotel and the, and the retail area. And we got the circle drive going in up there. And, and maybe, maybe I'm just not seeing it from the right perspective, but it seems to me like there's a lack of cohesion between those two plans. And, and the thing I, I just wanted to encourage you guys to, to remember is that, you know, we, we kind of have that control knob, right? We have the access to the sewer, which is, which is what, what really everybody needs up there. And so I would just encourage you guys to, to be awfully picky, right? With, with your plans and, and who connects and how they connect and what they're, what they're doing up there and just, you know, keep, keep Edwardsville, Edwardsville's needs in, in mind while, while you're doing that. Cause, cause some things I wonder about, maybe these, these are, have already been answered and I just don't know. But I, I wonder like with, you know, if, if, if the plans do go forward with that manufacturing and, or warehouse or whatever that is, are, are we paying for 110th Street or, you know, because that seems like an awful lot of wear and tear on the roads. And I'm not sure who's, who's footing the bill for that. But like I said, just, just to encourage you guys to, to please remember, we don't owe Bonner anything, right? And they, they really couldn't care less what goes in over there. So I just, I hope that you guys keep that in mind and be awfully picky about, about, you know, what, what we can control up there. Thank you.
Are there any others? Okay, we just take your name and address, you have three minutes.
My name's Rod Pappy. I live at 1208 South 102nd Terrace. Connected to what this guy just said. I used to work in the underground business pertaining to the sewer, as a matter of fact. Might want to make sure that if Bonner is connecting to our sewers, that their capacity doesn't run so high that Edwardsville doesn't have enough sewage capacity to run in there too. You understand? I don't know how big this sewer interceptor is. If it's 12 inch, 18, 24, we don't want them to hog up all the space in the sewer line. So that we don't, if we develop later, we don't have room. So might keep an eye on that. We don't, I don't know what they're building up there. I have no idea, but it's just my thought.
Thank you.
Mayor, do you want me to address any of that broadly? I mean.
You can broadly, I think that would be.
So, so part of the, the total agreement, there is a capacity on that sewer. It's set specifically no more than 100,000 gallons. It is through a lift station and a meter. So we have a way to regulate that sewer. They do have to expand our sewer over and it's 12 to 15 inch pipe going into an 18 just in pipe. So capacity has been a key component of that. So that is something we obviously have looked at and as well as access on to 110th Street. Obviously there's capital improvements to that, both federal and local dollars. And so those are part of the items that we have looked at.
Thank you.
Happy to answer. Y'all both know me, so feel free to give me a call. I'll be happy to talk in detail.
Thank you, Mike. Okay, now on to number four, which is here presentation by B H C Roads on 98th Street preliminary design project.
So Mayor, I'm gonna introduce Dave Nolte. I don't know if y'all have met Dave before. I think he's been here once or twice, but he was here where I think when we approved the contract for 98th Street. Obviously he's with B H C Roads. And recall that we really have two separate projects. So the first piece was a project, which is really this study, this preliminary engineering study that said, we're gonna look at, at 98th Street from K 32 to the North City Limits line. And kind of do some overall review, things such as what are our trouble spots? What kind of right of way might we need? And some concepts on, on cross sections and how to, what we want to approve. Subsequent to starting that, we did get funded with the federal funding for that portion that goes from Kansas Avenue to the north as an actual construction project. So part of what we're gonna present tonight are the options kind of for that. Because I think our thought is whatever we do in one section, we'll want to do concurrently through the whole section. And we know that's gonna be over a number of years, right? It's not all gonna get built at once, but we want to be consistent in what we decide we want to do. So we have a, that's a collector, major collector street. So we want to make sure we're just consistent. We don't come in and do something here and something else here, something else here, you know, a consistent plan. So this is kind of the review of that for the council level. We'll have another presentation kind of once the plan is mostly complete. But really wanted to have an idea tonight, kind of get some input from both councils and have Dave, have Dave address this part. Dave will turn it over. Every now and then I may say Dave or David, so they have two people. David is on our 110th Street project and Dave's on our 98th Street project. So I can't keep track of it. D1, D2, something.
We try to confuse him as much as we can.
Doesn't take much anymore, so.
So yes, as Mike said, I'm Dave Nolte with B H C. And, and you kind of led throughout the whole thing here, but we want to kind of talk about the overall section from K 32 all the way up to the Northern City Limits. So what's out there today? I was out there a couple of weeks ago and took some photos and did a little measuring. And I have to admit myself, I was a little astonished at the widths that are out there that I pulled off there. So 17 foot wide on this one, we got 18 here. So, you know, as our previous discussions with, with Mike and Dustin is like, you know, people have really tough time meeting another vehicle, whether it's a pickup truck or they got a trailer or something else. They, they do have some concerns when they're in, in areas like this. So, and you can tell there's no ditches, so any major stormwater, it's gonna be running in the street also. So that kind of restricts the driving and concerns of the, of the traveling public in that area. Northern end, obviously we got a little bit wider and it's up there by the 435 overpass. 28 foot wide, which is a much easier way to travel and eat and a little more safer and more comfortable. So if nothing else, it's a kind of a good, good comparison, I guess, if you will, on that area. We do have some drainage concerns, as you all know. Underneath the bridges of the 435s, we've got a lot of standing water there. And if we ever do widen out, we want to put in some storm sewer so we can collect that and get that standing water out of the area. Bottom lower right area is, is basically a driveway, which is kind of a two-fold picture. It's, it's a steep driveway because you've got retaining walls right next to it. And then we also got water continuously run down, which, you know, it hadn't rained for several days when I was out there. So, you know, we do have some drainage concerns and probably have to do some under drains when we, when we do that section of roadway so that we keep that water in the system and not on top of our asphalt. Utilities, utilities, utilities. As you can tell, the larger picture there, we got fiber optic crossing there. We got water lines, gas lines and a whole mess of overhead, which is that Swartz intersection there. So that always tends to be our, our challenges on where do we put those utilities? And we'll get on to those, another discussion on that a little bit later. But some of the other challenges, we've got retaining walls already as far as driveways. And the upper left there, you can, there's retaining walls there on the left. And so we need to be cognizant of when we widen out, we're gonna be right up against those houses and probably add more retaining walls. Site distance, as you look down the roadway in that area is a little bit short. So we need to probably take the tops off on those hills in that area. And then probably fill in a few of the lower areas to improve our site distance. Again, this is another site distance challenge. One on the lower bottom there is Swartz as you're looking west. So it's, it's also pretty short as you stand the intersection. Cars are gonna be coming up there pretty quick. So knowing when they're coming up would be a big help and a safety concern for sure. As Mike alluded to, we've taken this whole segment and kind of divided it into zones. The zone four is the Kansas Avenue to the Northern City Limits section. Zone two and three, we divided those up mostly because the right of way in those two areas have some differentials. One is 60 to 65 area and then the zone three is somewhere in the 40 to 70 range, which varies back and forth. So we felt like if any improvements occur and you see some needs to maybe purchase them right away, at least we know maybe what zones to look at first. Zone one and two was split up because of the creek there. It's gonna be a high dollar improvement really in that area. So we felt like dividing that up. And if you wanted to allocate funds for just a short area to make some improvements, that might be an area that we could, we could look at. With that, we're considering 80 foot right of way for each of those zones. It's broken down the zones and what, what the dollar amount would be for that area. So overall, we're looking at almost a million dollars to get right of way, 80 footer right of way from top to bottom. Another million dollar question is the two typical sections that we have that we're considering. The top one is a 32 foot back to back. It's got 14 foot drive lanes and a 10 foot multipurpose trail on one side. And we've shown a five foot future trail, future sidewalk on the other. Again, overall distance, it's in 59 feet. Dropping down to the lower type, typical section B, this is a 36 foot back to back. It allows for designated bike lanes on the pavement. We also showed five foot sidewalk on each side. Again, planning for future on one and certainly want to put in a sidewalk for when we do the street improvements. Not much difference overall width, 58 feet. You may, you may ask, well, why do we need 80 footer right of way? Well, back to the utilities we see up here, we want to give them plenty of room to, to go back. Water line, usually we run that on one side, storm sewers on the others when we adding, adding that. So we want to do this one time deal. So getting the 80 foot right of way is what we feel is, is appropriate. So as we walk down to the, here's the utilities that we're, we're talking about, kind of widening out. Like I said, you got storm sewer, we got sanitary, we have gas. This particular schematic doesn't even show the overhead, which as we mentioned earlier, the spaghetti mess that was up in the air on, on Swartz intersection there. So we just want to make sure we give it adequate room so that they can do their work also. So with that, we just need to make a decision, type A or type B or something maybe in between if you have some other ideas.
But yeah. So I was just gonna say, the reason these two sections, right? So recall this is a federally funded project, right? And through the S T P program. And one of the criteria in those is to be multi-mobile or to provide for various types of transportation. And so bicycles is one of those types of transportations. Again, we're really thinking of this, I mean, if you really think about it, at least from State Avenue all the way to K 32 and potentially then into the industrial park. So when you're looking at bicycles specifically, you either do on loan, on road bike lanes, which I'm sure y'all have seen these out there, right? It's a, a stripe that creates more pavement area. But then you pick up a little, you don't have quite as much width. The other option is to do the 10 foot concrete trail section that, similar to what we're doing on 110th Street. You know, we don't want to necessarily do that on every single street because not every street is built on a bike route or something of that. Think about 98th Street being a pretty major corridor. You know, we need to accommodate for bikes. And so not to say that bikes wouldn't ride on this, ride in the street on either one of those, any less than bikes would ride on the sidewalk in any, either one of them. But the 10 foot multipurpose trail is designed sets that you can have both bicycles and walkers in the same path. That's why they require the 10 feet or bicycle going north, bicycle going south or walkers going north and south. So that, that's where that 10 feet comes from. I don't know from a cost standpoint, there's a significant difference between those two types. I mean.
If I was leaning one way or another, I would say that the type B would be more expensive because you are paying for more streets.
Right.
And a thicker depth.
Right.
So cost wise, your type A would probably be most economical. And to piggyback on what Mike said, the type A, we could put the sharrows, the bike sharrows, if you will, on the pavement to help vehicle, the death vehicle to notify or notice that they are, are bikes there. The, the lower type B section is a designated. I mean, that does give the bicyclists a buffer to ride in. And my experience is that, you know, we've kind of got two different types of bicycle users. And you've got, you have the road, road riders. They do like to be on the road. They're not a big fan to be on trails. But on the other hand, family conditions, you really want to get that, that buffer between younger children, families, like I said, that are using and biking on that trail. So it's kind of whatever you think the, the most users are going to be at that time. But I think we're leaning more towards the type A.
And if you think about those up there, type A is, so with Kansas Avenue, it's effectively type A, right? It's a, it's a 32 foot back of curb. It has on-street bikes, so there's signage out there. We've never done the share, which is something we need to add. But it has a share the road signage. It has sidewalk on one side, but we designed it such that sidewalk can be put on both sides of that road. So when we did the right of way, the grading and everything, we made for those accommodations. I don't know if one of these, you know, we, what, really what we're trying to do now is if we can get kind of general consensus here as we move forward, then, you know, we can plan for the rest of it, start getting into better budgeting and some of those things and figure out how, how, how those work. So.
Is there much bicycle riding on 32 highway at all? Does anybody?
They have a couple of, they have a couple of rides from time to time.
Right.
You know, so they'll come out. But I, just for me, I, I don't see them like every single weekend. There used to be a run that came through town that started, I think at Boulevard Brewery or something and went to Yudora or something like that. And, and you know, you'd run 10 miles and somebody else would run kind of deal. I know there's a couple of bicycle rides. The S T P or not the S T P, but the E S P program, when we did the, the corridor study, one of the things there was talked about having bicycle facilities on both sides of K 32, so out of the road. But whether it's the shoulder or some, some other type of bicycle dedication, so.
Hey guys, can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Um, I had a question about section A. Were we putting a sidewalk or multipurpose trail on both sides of the street or just one side of the street?
Let me make sure. We would, we would plan to put the multipurpose side on one side of the street. Probably the east side, I think is how it lays out best. We would grade the west side for future sidewalk, but not necessarily construct the sidewalk at this time. So it'd be graded, just like it is again on Kansas Avenue where it's graded. So it's for ease of maintenance for if a vehicle leaves the road, those types of things, you go ahead and grade it. But we wouldn't put the sidewalk in unless there was, you know, unless there was, council wanted to put both the sidewalk and the trail in, so.
Sure. And I, I would say that one side would be flouncy. Um, I think, and, and I'm interested to hear what everyone else thinks, but I think the people in Edwardsville, like the taxpayers here, probably would benefit more from the sidewalk or multipurpose trail than bike lanes. And if that one's the more affordable one, it seems like the way to go from my perspective.
With the connection of the scoring or the federally funded project, maybe. Or type question about bicycle use, is there the, there is a significant impact in the scoring.
Right.
As in for the A T C P.
Right. Alternative transportation modes, right?
Mike, we're not able, we're not able to hear any of those comments.
No, I, I, I think the point was, sorry, that Dustin was, was noting that. So in this project, when we made the request for fundings, we had to include bicycle facility, you know, again, multi, they look at it as multipurpose transportation. So you may or may not be able to hit every, every one of those boxes. For example, we're not building in here any bus lanes or bus dedicated places. Now that would have got us extra points, but since there's no buses, you don't do that now. That part of the reason to make sure you have good right of way. So in the future, if you had a bus and you needed a, a turnoff place, you know, maybe that can be incorporated in. But we're not planning that right now. In the future, you know, if there was a need for additional bicycle type facilities, it, it could be eligible for other funding in the future. But the scoring for this project specifically had that, that we would address bicycle facilities in one of these two ways. Either on-street with dedicated bike lanes or off the street through a multipurpose trail. And I think that, I think as Mr. Kayhar said, I mean, the good thing about the multipurpose trail, it's really more dedicated to your, I'd call your average walker, your person bicycling, maybe a family, you know, taking a stroll. Ultimately connects into our overall trail system. So I mean, if you can think about it, if you had this all the way down 98th Street, you know, then you could connect into our trails that are along the river or things of that nature. Now I realize that's a very long vision, but for this part, you know, I think whatever we decide, then it makes it, it makes it best to continue that plan all the way through the 98th Street corridor.
When I think about future development along 32, all the way up to State Avenue, and, and there's a lot of bicycle clubs that, that they go to, they go to breakfast, you know, a bike 10 miles, go to breakfast and bike another 20 miles and stop for, for lunch and, and bike back. To go to this amount of effort and not look, not seriously consider B because it's, I realize it's a little bit more expensive, but it also gives us more options for five, 10, 15, 20 years from now. I, I think I would lean more towards the option B from that, from a long, from a long view standpoint for business development and, and include, and Edwardsville being included in a riding pattern through the Kansas City area.
I just feel like when we're spending taxpayer dollars, a lot of those bicyclists don't live here in Edwardsville. And I, I could be wrong, but when we're spending that much money, especially in, in our situation now, and, and we want to be, you know, forward sided, but our families and our, our folks that live here now would get a lot more use out of a sidewalk that's off the road than being on, on the road. Especially the hilly nature of that street. I don't know if it would be, K 32 is safe if there's a bike lane, but 98th Street, I don't know if it would ever be really safe for bikes to be on the road. Where the multipurpose path, they can ride on that as well, if I understand correctly. Is that right, Mike?
Yes, it's designed for, again, that's why I call it multipurpose. It could be walking, riding, running, bicycling. I, I think like Mr. Nolte said, you know, you're avid, long, you know, person's gonna go ride a 20 or 30 mile segment is probably not going to use the multipurpose trail. I mean, I, I won't say none, but I mean, they tend to want to go with few stops as possible. Just, it's about distance. And so, you know, that, and, and I would, and Dave can, I mean, you know, the, the 32 foot wide section. back of curb, while not dedicated to bicycling, uh, can still utilize a share the road. Right, right. So bicycles can run, again, if you think of Kansas Avenue, that's the best vision I can give you. I mean, if you think about that road, it's a thirty-two foot back of curb, back of curb road. So, uh, you know, if you had bicyclists on that, a person should be able to safely pass them. Uh, you know, you know, proper precautions, but I mean, they should be able to pass bicyclists unless they're, you know, five or six wide or something like that. And in that case, they would be outside the bike lanes too here. So just sometimes seeing a vision. I know recently, I think it's eighty, no, seventy-ninth street in Lenexa, they took that road and through parts of it, they've narrowed it down and put, uh, designated bike lanes. I think that road is probably thirty-two feet wide and they put in bike lanes. And then they've narrowed their driving lanes down to eleven feet is probably what they've done. So it makes it pretty tight in, in, in that scenario, I, I think, but I'm not, I'm not an engineer, but.
Well, then the other thing too is considering the amount of vehicles that actually use ninety-eighth street now today. Obviously there's not, not a ton of them and we have a long future, obviously with this roadway, but, uh, again, I think it's, it's, that's, that's why we're here. We're talking about this, so. That will be improved on both options.
Whoever's talking, we can't hear.
Yeah, I, I was, Dustin was just noting that the reconstruction of the road will improve site distance so that the design, so, so when you think about it for site distance or travel, the road is being designed at a forty mile per hour design speed, which is a posted thirty-five mile now. Again, exactly the same design speed that was done for Kansas Avenue. So what that does is where there's hills or where there's valleys, you, you will see, you know, taking off the tops of, of hills and filling in the valleys to some respect. But as I remember, there wasn't a lot, I mean, quite a bit of this section, the, the entire section of road will probably stay pretty consistent to its current grade. And I think most of y'all, you know, we've all driven that road and you probably know the hills where you're going. I can't see anything over this hill. You can expect those are going to probably get cut out. And you know where those really low dip spots are, and those are probably the ones getting filled up. But probably, I don't know, seventy plus, eighty percent of the road may stay relatively at its elevation. I mean, there's a lot more, when I say relative, I'm saying you, you may be talking two feet up or down versus taking off six or eight feet, so, or filling six or eight feet.
Well, I think both, both plans look wonderful. The street is going to be wonderful when it's finished, but being that section A or plan A, bikers can still use a trail as opposed to spending the money on the asphalt in the street. Economically, I, I would think A would be better, spending our taxpayer's dollars.
And this is, uh, Scott, this is Stites, and, and, and I know that we, we're saying that, uh, it, it costs more. And I think I would like to know what that means as far as A versus B. Uh, what is, what is the cost difference? What, what are we talking about that amount being?
Do you have an idea of, I mean, I, I, we've looked at it, well, you may have some more up-to-date numbers on the total versus. So our, our project that we did for that north section, I want to say was about a seven million dollar total.
Yeah, it's just.
Budget and about three point eight million of federal funding. It, you know, as most of these things go, you, you kind of start off a little high and try to, try to, you know, we didn't get all of our federal funding though that, as we'll see in the next item, that could change, uh, to the good. So there's that. Probably the total corridor is, you know, twenty, what did we say, twenty-one to twenty-five million, probably, range.
Yeah, right at the twenty million dollar range.
Twenty, yeah, somewhere in that range. So, I mean, it's a long, you know, obviously a lot of dollars over time. But do you have any idea what, I mean, such, or just, just a percentage difference? I mean, is it a five percent swing or is it a fifteen percent swing, do you think?
I'm thinking you're probably in the five percent area.
Right.
Again, we're talking four to five feet, but it's the, really the depth of that street that you're paying more than like the ten-foot trail.
Right.
So.
I don't, did you hear that, Mr. Stites? He's saying probably a five percent, you know, say a five to ten percent swing between the two sections. And mainly because you've got the depth of road versus you don't, you know, the trail, you're, you know, s- six inches in, in base and, and so you just don't have that, you know, you don't have that twelve. Well, you got, you know, the asphalt is nine inches total, I think it is, and then you got about a foot of base under it.
The other thing you need to consider too is maintenance, you know, if you're going to have designated bike lanes, you got more pavement markings, uh, more area to push snow. I mean, it, it does add up a little bit here and there all the time.
Okay, thank you.
Cause it's not, cause it's not as thick, you know, the comment was that the, the bike or the, the bike trail may be more maintenance on the long haul because it's a thinner piece of pavement that has less base underneath it. So it's more apt to ship and shift and buckle and crack, um, over year, over, I don't even think with use, just with time and land shift.
What I think that the other comment was with the, when you have designated bike lanes, then you do have pavement markings that you wouldn't have. Uh, and you have a little more width to plow than you do in, you know, in, in the streets. I mean, you're four feet roughly. I mean, uh, yeah, now, is four feet going to change? I mean, I don't know what the plow, how wide our plows are, but it probably doesn't change. Yeah.
Mike, we can't hear, whenever, whenever Dustin's talking, we can't hear him at all.
Yeah, we just don't have extra microphones, so I'm trying to repeat. I think what, what Dustin's saying, you know, relative to staff, I don't know that there's one section over the other section that we have a strong feeling for it. You know, I would say section A is probably, you know, that's, that's common to what we, again, somewhat built on Kansas Avenue and it's common to what we're doing on a hundred and tenth street in the sense of having the, the trail, you know, ten-foot wide trail on one side and a future sidewalk on the other side. I think the other thing in, in that utility thing was good to show, but typically in our case, the water is not under the street, which really is good. The more you can keep water from not being under the pavement sections, the better, uh, because number one, if you have a failure, you got it in the middle of the road. And number two, when you have taps, uh, you gotta go out and cut your street and, and, you know, now you have one other place for there to be pavement failures because of moisture. So, uh, I would say that, uh, you know, it might give you a little more room on the section A, that you can put things under the sidewalk. I mean, I, I'm not as worried about if you have to cut out part of a sidewalk for a tap or something like that. It's much easier to repair, but again, I don't know that one is preferred over the other. It just, I think we want to be consistent in what we move forward with. Yeah, I, I, Dustin just talking about, you know, proximity to houses, et cetera. Um, I don't know that either one of these changes that too much.
B is actually a foot shorter.
It is a foot shorter. And again, right, yeah. Section A keeps the road traffic a little bit farther away from houses. And, and again, we, when we say we're eighty feet of right of way, I mean, that is our standard typical. Though we get into situations where sometimes we have to either get more easements or sometimes we use easements in, in lieu of right of ways for, say it's power poles or something like that. Uh, just to use an easement, sometimes people feel more comfortable with the easement versus the right of way because you still technically you own an easement, so the property owner still owns an easement. And obviously they don't own the right of way in that, in that sense from just ownership. Uh, but that eighty feet, I, I know it sounds like a lot and I'm always like trying to shrink it up, but we already know that we're going to have fiber optics coming all the way from State Avenue, all the way to Wood End Road coming down this section. I mean, you know, and so there's one more utility that's in the ground, that's not even in the ground yet. Some point you may have sewer, you know, in, in, in the ground. I mean, obviously not in this project, but it, you know, where do you put that? And that nice five-foot space always looks great, but you gotta remember you got inlet boxes and storm pipe under that area. So you don't get much use of that five-foot space between the curb and whatever else you have. I mean, it makes for some nice green areas, but oftentimes there's a lot of stuff under it. So Mayor, I don't, I, I, I mean, I, I don't know that I'm here, I mean, I, it sounds like the leaning is towards A. I, I mean, I, I know there's a lot of comments and we, and we still have time, um, but.
Mike, when you say future sidewalk, does that mean that that would not be built with this project? It would be.
Correct.
To being later.
It would be graded for a sidewalk, so, so the grade of the land would be that.
If you didn't put a sidewalk there, you can leave that open to put those utilities in you're talking about, right?
Correct. And, and sometimes they are under it. I mean, fiber optics are often under sidewalks.
I'm leaning toward B. I think that bike lanes should be on the, on the street itself. And then you get your sidewalk that's built on the east, and then you've got the easement on the, the west that you could do that. And then future put the sidewalk in. To me, that makes sense. It's got wider lanes and bicycles, you know, are getting prevalent, but they're going to have to learn how to share the road with cars also. So I, I lean toward B on this.
Does, uh, uh, David, I'm going to ask this question kind of off. So at some point, if this road, especially the north section became m- more commercial, right? I mean, today it's pretty, pretty rural residential, uh, but you know, that there's some pretty open spaces up there and let's just say that it, you know, you started having some other type of development up there and you wanted to go to a three-lane road section, does one of these work better? I mean, clearly at the thirty-six back curb, back of curb, I mean, you can get, you know, your two twelve-foot lanes and some center turn lane in it.
It would still be very tight.
It'd be tight.
It'd be very tight. I mean, you go to Levens and, and then you'd have a ten-foot center lane, basically, is what we're down to.
Okay. I just didn't, I didn't know, you know, one of these was better for future planning in that sense.
That, that would be the best you could do for thirty-six foot back to back.
You know, if you look at the, if you, one thing I'm going to try and defend here is if you got sixteen-foot width, there's people up there that have one-ton trucks, they've got trailers that might, they might be hauling livestock in. They might be pulling bales of hay down that. I think they need the extra width. And then the future sidewalk, let it be a future sidewalk and go ahead and put the sidewalk on the other side or even the multipurpose trail. I think the multipurpose trail is going to end up having four-wheelers on it and everything else. So I think you gotta be really careful about what you build up there and what you expect to be on it. So as far as future development, I think it's there already.
Okay.
That's just my opinion, so.
Well, we can, uh, I mean, we could, we can, I mean, we're going to start running numbers either way, uh, and, you know, we, we can get some more feedback. Again, this is that ninety-eighth street total corridor plan, and so it's, it's not designed, you know, we're not going to be coming back to you in a month saying this is the final design and we're ready to go build it. It was really about, as we move forward over time, being prepared, again, as, as we know with, with federal funding, uh, and, you know, and there could be more federal funding coming down the pike with, with some of the, the, you know, American Rescue Plan and some of those. The better we're prepared and planned and the more work we've got done, the better we are to be able to submit, submit projects and get them funded. Right. And so both of these, both of these sections would, would do well in the federal funding process going, going forward, right? I mean, they, they would, they would bode well in, in the way they score them and things like that unless they come out and change everything. And I don't, I don't expect that to happen, so.
Mike, this is, uh, Stites again, and, and I'll tell you, and I, I, and I really do appreciate everybody's input on this, whether you're advocating for A or B, uh, and because I think that, uh, it, it's given us a lot to think about uh, on which way we go ultimately. Um, I think that anything that we do, A or B, people are going to be happy. I mean, from what we've got out there now to either A or B. Um, and I, I think that, like you said, we'll have some more future discussion regarding which, which direction we go. Um, I don't know that I can tell you that I'd lean, I, I, right now, I would say I would lean towards A, but I'm not saying that I'm, uh, opposed to be either. So I, I, and I, I, I see the points that everyone made and, and, and I appreciate that we are, uh, going down this path, uh, no pun intended, but, uh, uh, that we are, uh, discussing this and, and I'm, I'm just thankful that we're finally got to this point.
Well, I think my suggestion, Mayor, just for, as you're out and about driving around, I mean, sometimes we don't pay attention to these things until you're out and about, then you drive around and then you start going, oh, okay, I, I see what, I mean, sometimes just physically seeing it. You know, like I say, I know seventy-ninth street, they recently, they took a fairly, you know, it was, I think it's probably thirty-two feet. They put bike lanes on it. Uh, Lenexa has this bike plan that they're doing apparently. I mean, you know, we've had roads built, uh, parallel, uh, state, you know, some of these other roads here in Mindock County that have been built with either multipurpose trails along them. I think up in the Piper area, there's a number of projects that have been done up there that have these types of, of profiles. So I would suggest driving and seeing and thinking about them and go, oh, I, I like that. Or, oh, you know, now that I see it on the ground, maybe I don't like it as much. So I think that's a, a good input process there.
There's nothing, as far as I know, that would say you could do A from Kansas down to thirty-two and B from Kansas north, you know, depending on what your anticipated development plans are on, on that section of road.
Right.
That's absolutely, yeah, absolutely correct. And just as, as Mike said, maybe as an example, going to the northern end where, where it did show the twenty-eight foot back or edge to edge, maybe that kind of gives you an idea of, uh, you know, if you happen to watch trucks come down that area, what kind of space are they're using? Um, I mean, it feels wide open compared to what, what the southern segment is for, for sure. So, um, then also, um, we're just trying to get some kind of direction as far as the Kansas section north. Um, there's surveys wrapping up, we should get that, uh, this week sometime. So just kind of knowing what the direction, uh, that you all prefer would be great.
This is Stites again, and also I, I think that the input from the unified government, what happens from our north city boundary going into KCK up to State Avenue is important also. Um, on, um, just us, uh, making sure that we're talking with them and seeing where they're going. And just like, uh, Councilman Adams said, you know what? Uh, if we go from Kansas Avenue north on a, on a particular A or B, and it, it may be different than what goes south. Um, I, 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 so I want to, Mike and I know that we had spoke offline here, uh, about, you know, having those conversations with, uh, the unified government as, as, you know, their future um, plans for ninety-eighth street going from our city, northern city boundary, uh, up to State Avenue.
Correct, and I'm trying to get those arranged.
Thank you.
I think that's Mayor.
I, I think, I think you've got some fairly, nothing concrete, but I think you've got some good direction.
What we needed.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Are you going to take this item, Dustin, or you want me to take it? I don't care.
Okay, uh, next item on the agenda will be consider authorizing city manager's. Okay, uh, next item on the agenda will be consider authorizing a city manager to execute a project programming request with the Kansas Department of Transportation. For the Ninety Eighth Street corridor project.
Can I say yes now? Thank you.
Uh, we're gonna have some other meetings on it, but certainly if you have a, I mean, if you. Not now during this meeting, but if you can send those to us, that'd be great. Email them or give me a call or. If Dusty called. Okay.
Okay.
Mike, I don't know if you were saying that to the citizens that are there and attend. But also, if you would let them know that, uh, to, uh, they can email the city council too, uh, that we would be. Glad to hear those comments that they have. Thank you.
Correct. Thank you.
Okay, Dustin, go ahead.
Well, I thought maybe Mike was gonna do this, but I guess I'm doing it. No, I I mean, I think I got the gist of it here. Uh. The K dot form thirteen O two is for the project pro programming request. And it's basically, uh, from my understanding of it is the, uh. Uh, that we will be committing funds to do the project to make our match. Um, at this very early stage in the process. Um, the, uh. I don't have those numbers right in front of me, but the original, uh. The original request was for, uh. I can't remember what it was. Four point eight million dollars. Okay. The original request was four point eight million. We were, we received three point seven million. Uh, or were approved for three point seven million, uh. And so there, and there's still some talk, um, with this new funding coming out from the federal government that possibly the SDP committee might fund. It more full. Um, but basically, we would be approving with this project program request. That we would be. It's not voting to actually. Commit the money, but that we would be able to. Is that how you would say it, Mike?
It it basically authorizes. The city to to proceed with the project at this point, and so. Again, the dollars are pretty broad. They're they're based on what was sent to, uh. The Mid America Regional Council through the STP programming process. Um. You know, there's, we're a long ways off of actual commitment of funds. Um, again, with federal projects, it's an eighty twenty match for those things that are eligible. Those things that are eligible basically includes the construction of the project. And it includes. What they call construction engineering, which is the inspection part of the project. Acquisition of right of way. All the engineering. Any utility relocations that we have to pay for are all borne a hundred percent by the city, and that that's pretty standard all the time, so. This authorizes us to go to that next step in the project. You, we've already awarded the engineering, so that process is already underway. Uh, this gets it on KDOT's program. So that this this is considered an FY. Our federal fiscal year twenty twenty four. Uh, remember, the federal fiscal years run from October through September, so. Uh, yeah, I always get those wrong. I I see they're September, October, right? October one. Uh, so. The project could let as early as October of twenty twenty three. Uh, but you have to back off of that about twenty four months in order to. Uh, get the whole program done, twenty four, twenty six months, so. Did the same thing with the other projects we've done in the past. Again, it it authorizes it, puts it in. KDOT's program and it starts the process from KDOT. Uh, to to look at this. There's several places along the way where. There's plans that have to be reviewed and approved and. You know, typically you don't want to back out of them, but sometimes something comes up or the funding doesn't come in and and you have to, uh. Step back from from a project.
This is Stites, and I make a motion to authorize city manager to execute a project program request for Ninety Eighth Street corridor corridor.
Second.
It has been moved in second to authorize the city manager to execute a project programming request with KDOT. On the Ninety Eighth Street corridor, but the clerk please call roll.
Adams?
Yes.
Kayhar?
Yes.
Malot?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Stites?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, Mike.
Uh, other than my written report, I do have one additional item this evening. Uh. As you know, we've been looking at, uh. An, uh, an electronic sign or an electronic message sign. Near the corner of Fourth and K thirty two on the. What would be the northwest corner. Um, I had, uh, the company that we worked with, Young Signs. Give me a proposal. Uh, to see if we, uh, would. I talked about a temporary or at least a preliminary sign so we can put that out there. People can see what it's gonna look like. Uh, but it would be static, obviously, wouldn't be the electronic sign. So they've come back with basically two options. Uh, one is just setting the steel post, so all these signs set on steel posts, so they put the footings in to put the steel post in. And then we would put a. Uh, I I think a a solid sign board is the better way to go versus a a banner. And and that sign board would say, you know, something like. Future electronic message sign, welcome to Edwardsville's, you know, we'll we'll put some, something on the two faces. So people can see it, maybe get accustomed to it, make sure before we go invest sixty five thousand or so. Um. That we really are sure that's what we, where and what we want to have. The second option is in in addition to just, and that, so that option. Uh, is around for the for the posts and. Those signs is around thirty eight hundred dollars. Again, you're gonna reuse the the post. Which is about two thirds of that, so, and you could reuse the sign boards, we could use them for some other, you know, put new graphics on them, so. The second option would be to. Go ahead and besides just the sign, build the base piece of it, which is kind of concrete, but I think he calls it a, uh. A mowing, uh, there's a name for it here, but, uh.
Monument sign.
Yeah, it, so they put the footings in and then they put the, uh. The vertical support, so it's kind of that that bottom piece of the sign would be there. Plus the post, that runs around sixty four hundred dollars. Again. All the post, all the cement, all of that. Unless we don't do it at all. Gets reused with the sign, so it'll come off the final price of of the sign. I just wanted to kind of bring that up if there's any thoughts or. Feelings on that. I mean, again, the the least expensive is to get the steel post set. Put the, you know, it, they'd be like five by ten sheets, again, with the graphics on them. Uh, make sure that where they're placed at is where we want them, that we're not causing any problems. Thirty, forty five days later, if we're all happy with that. We pull the sign boards off and they would put an actual electronic message sign up there.
Why can't, why can't Public Works set a couple posts and put a. A banner up there and 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 not spend so freaking much money? And and so we know where it's gonna be, what it looks like, and and we could even put, you know, for feedback.
We we could go, yeah. I mean, these steel posts are, uh, I think, uh, fourteen feet long. Cause they get augured down in the ground to hold that that structure up, so that was the thought was. You're gonna go drill holes, put them in the ground, do it one time.
There there are inherent weaknesses of banners on a highway like that with the wind. They may not last very long where a solid sign would.
You know, we're 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 talking about thirty days, sixty days.
Something of that nature, I think. I'm not sure we could buy the steel post. I mean. We don't really have, we would have to go rent equipment. I mean, to be able to auger a hole down either six or eight, I mean, we we would have to rent the equipment. People, I mean, I think from a cost standpoint, the, again, the the the. The the post, so it's setting the steel vertical post and concrete augering the footing. And then installing the boards. Or banners. We can do banners. It saves a little bit of money about about. Banners cost around five hundred dollars. The boards are about twelve hundred dollars, so you you about half price if you put banners on it. But I think putting the post in. From a, just a cost standpoint, I think it makes more sense to let the professionals put them in, put them in one time.
This is Stite, and I'm, I I I think. I understood what, or I understand what Councilman Adams was saying. That if we do these borings and we put those posts in the ground, that limit is limits us to that is the location. And what he was saying, I think, and correct if I'm wrong, that if we put in something more of a temporary, then and we don't like that. It's easy to move and we haven't spent those, uh, dollars.
That's accurate.
Yeah.
Let me ask one more question. So on that. Intersection there.
Right.
What were the other options?
As far as.
What corners were the other options?
Well, really, that's only the really corner that has any.
I just, I wanted.
Yeah, that's really our only option is on the corner over by the Christian church, but we have to be, remember, back out of KDOT right of way, so it's back a little bit, so. On that corner, that's really the only option.
For that intersection.
For that intersection. If if you want to have the visibility of the traffic north, south and. Mainly west, you'd see it from the east, but you're not gonna see it till you're up at the intersection just because of. You know, visibility. I mean, I think if you put in, because I I I ask about that with them, I mean. You're still gonna have to, even if you put in four by four, four by six posts or put in steel. I mean, you got quite a bit now. Once you put it in the ground, if we decide we don't want it, you could cut those posts off and reuse the steel somewhere. I mean, I mean, obviously, you would lose what's in the ground unless you. Wanted to go dig it back out. I don't think you probably want to do that, but. Or we can go straight to building the sign. I my my thought was something temporary or at least enough to say. Uh, you know, this is, this is workable and we'd like it.
Right.
Before we get.
Councilman Adams is saying, if this isn't the place, then.
Yeah.
Why do something so permanent to find that out?
Yeah.
Do they, do they have a, you know, like the sign up the street, the the mobile traffic sign? Do they have something like that we could use? I I know that might not be the greatest thing, but.
I'm not sure. I know.
The traffic sign that's on the trailer, like the speed limit.
Oh, oh. Well, we do have our sign. I mean, we'll, we, I don't know, we've got that in now. I mean, we've got the one we just bought.
Just to identify what is gonna be the best.
Doesn't even have to be the same size, just something in that spot.
Yeah. I mean, we can do that, too. I was trying to find a temporary. But without spending a lot of money and then and then, I mean, I'm with you. I I was trying to find, it's like, okay, if we put something in. How can we reuse it? If we like it, we can use it. If we don't like it. We're not out too much money. Right? I mean, you're out some money, but I mean. You know, you're not out the board. I mean, you can reuse the sign boards because they're five.
Something just happened where we can't hear, Mike. I'm not sure what happened. We can't hear anything. Is somebody talking?
I I think we're gonna be able to tell in twenty four hours whether we like it or not.
I agree.
I I I don't, I don't see, just pull something over there. And and stick it there and we'll see kind of, it doesn't have to be the right size, just so we can see the space and see kind of what the visuals are on it and. I'll have all of us drive by and take a look at it and.
Right, okay, well, we'll put our temporary, that's why I wanted to bring it, we'll put our temporary sign out and put a message on it and. You know, it it's a little different, but it, but we'll use that and go from there.
Perfect.
Perfect. I, that's why I wanted to bring it up. Thank you. Okay, I don't have anything else on the manager's report.
Thank you very much, Mike. Um, Margaret, we're gonna start with you.
Oh. Boy. Um.
Throw everybody off.
Killed right here, yeah.
Nobody else had reported. Um. Public Works, do you spray any of the? Any of the city at all? Do you spray for the weeds? Do you? Okay. There's been a couple corridors or coming down a hundred and tenth, and there's different spots in different areas where it just looked like there's just crops of dandelions. No. Correct, I did know that. Right. I don't know, has the city ever done done any spraying?
The only for dandelions, the only, that kind of, that kind of, we, we've done it primarily in our parkland. We haven't. We haven't typically done the right of, I, you're talking about the grass areas along the right of way where we maintain. We can certainly look into, we we generally use a third, so even at the park, we have a a. A third party company that does the spraying.
And I don't know what the cost would be. It just, it looks so nice when it's.
Right.
And a day later, if there's.
Vanelands are, yeah. Well.
Just a thought, a suggestion, maybe just to see what that would cost and.
Well, we'll get a price on doing that, and if it's not, you know, if it's not some crazy thing, we'll get it scheduled.
And I was down at the city park last weekend for the soccer games and. So many parents, so many people enjoyed. Being back out in the soccer, being back out. And the park did look very nice, so. Just wanted to say that. And excited about the cemetery board. Approving the funding for the monument cleaning. I think there's. Been a lot of good reception on that, so. That's all I have. Thank you for the update on the time, too. That was my question.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret. Garrett?
Nothing.
Okay, Chuck, Adams?
I just have one thing that, uh, this real quick. Uh, we had a report at TTPC last week on air quality, and I thought it might be good to bring it in front of everybody because it's. It was some information that, first of all, on page two, or it talks about the ozone season. And, uh, you know, you hear about ozone all the time. And just FYI, we're getting better at it. You know, in in fact, those red dotted lines are the federal. That's the level we're supposed to attain. And there was a new one in, I think, two thousand sixteen or seventeen, and we're under that. So just so you know, we are managing well in Kansas City. Things are looking good. There's, there were some interesting forecasts on the next couple pages. Um. It's hard to believe we're gonna, it's gonna get hot based on the last week. Or the last month of temperatures in Kansas City, but just thought you'd be interested in some of the the forecasts for this summer. And through the fall as far as the participa- or participation, precipitation and also temperature and. There is a little bit of concern about the drought on the last page. That the drought is creeping north and east. And and it's, this evidently has been going on for quite some time, but it's it's creeping towards our our neck of the woods. So anyway, just thought it'd be information. People would like to have in front of them and and know that we are. Meeting our our ozone expectations in Kansas City.
Thank you. Uh, next is Chuck Stites.
Yeah, first off, I'd like to say thanks for, um, uh, the Ninety Eighth Street presentation and and excited that we're moving down that path. Um, I know that the homeowners from all the way from K thirty two north to our, um, city line. They are excited to finally. Look at, see some, uh, potential roads getting fixed and so that they're safe to travel and nice and, uh, they well deserved. Um, the last thing that I wanted to say and ask Mike was, is there any, um, COVID updates regarding masks?
There, there is not, uh, that I'm aware of. We do have our on-call meeting tomorrow. And so hopefully after that meeting, I can send out. Whatever update. I I do understand. Uh, cause I did reach out that Thursday evening, the Unified Government Commission at five o'clock. Will be discussing. The current mask, the public health order. Um, and I mean, I I know they're having a meeting, but I haven't seen any outcome or what their plan is on it, so. Uh, I would say, uh, if you have access to look in on that, might learn some more, but. Uh, after the call tomorrow, I'll send something out to the council with what we learn. Otherwise, I haven't gotten any any new information.
I guess, uh, my only comment to that would be anyone that can reach out to a commissioner. Um, should do so and express their views on, uh, the mask ordinance, uh, prior to Thursday night's meeting, and that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Carolyn, you're next.
Okay, can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Perfect. Um, I, uh. Kind of repeating what Councilman Stite said, and I'm so excited to see us moving forward and, uh, maintaining and repairing our streets. I feel like. I feel like that's been a big need in the community, so it's really exciting to see things moving forward on that. Um, I wanted to mention to those in attendance and then whoever might be watching later, we do have another Edwardsville Mobile Pantry Event coming up the second Saturday in May, and that is a pre-registration required event. But if you know any families or, or folks in the community who might be in need, this is a great opportunity for them to receive groceries. Um, I was wondering on the, uh, monument, um, restoration, are the, is the CPPS board looking for volunteers to help with that? Or is that something that's going to be done by a company?
Come on. Councilmember Kayhar, this is Zach. Um, in response to your question about the monument restoration, that's all going to be handled by a third-party party contractor. So we, the staff went out and got pricing for this work and, and found an affordable option that we've, or we believe can get scheduled before Memorial Day, but it won't require any, um, uh, volunteer efforts. I think the company would actually rather prefer that they handle it all in-house and, and take care of it for us.
I totally understand. And Zach, while you're up, could you give us a quick update on the, um, citywide yard sale and citywide cleanups coming up?
Sure, so we've got the citywide garage sale happening this week, so that's on Saturday, and there's no registration for it, there's no cost to it or permitting involved. Really, we, we've got an interactive map that we put together, and if you want your sale to be advertised as part of that map, just contact me at City Hall, uh, either email or phone, and we'll get you added on there. You can also send the city a message on Facebook, I'll see it that way. We'll update the map kind of periodically throughout the week and release a final one on Friday. Um, that's for Saturday, but if people want to have their garage sales, you know, on Friday before or the Sunday after, they're more than welcome to. Pretty much all we ask is that if they do have any signage out, just to make sure that that gets pulled at the conclusion of the sale. Um, so that keeps stuff out of our right of way and keeps our code enforcement officer from chasing those around. Um, the, um, citywide cleanup will happen two weeks after that. Uh, on the 15th, we've got, uh, containers on order from KC disposal. We'll have about, oh, I want to say around 500 yards of, of containing storage space to, to takes, uh, larger bulky. Sorry, so it's a little bit more storage than we usually have, but we know that we've got, got a little bit of a buildup of, of, of demand for the event. Um, so that's on the 15th. We'll also have Adelante thrift there. They were, uh, they're a thrift store out of Wyandotte County. They were here at our 2019 event, so they'll have a truck available or on site on the 15th, and we'll be able to accept, you know, clothes or furniture or anything that's in, you know, workable, acceptable condition. They'll be able to accept that and take that back to the store and keep it, you know, from, from filling up the landfill. We'll also have two 40-yard containers of scrap metal and then, uh, five to six e-waste boxes, uh, on that day as well. So pretty much the whole, you know, catalog of, of waste services that we can offer, we're bringing it back for that event on the 15th, which starts at 8 o'clock, completely free to attend. You just need to be a resident and we'll be kind of checking off addresses as we go along. So, yeah, we're looking forward to get that back on the calendar.
Perfect, thank you for the update, Zach. I love that we have that, um, mission Adelante coming right after our citywide garage sale, so those garage sale leftovers can be hopefully resold and used for the good of the community instead of going to the landfill. Um, and one other thing I wanted to mention, and this is my last thing, is with the American Recovery Act dollars coming up, I just wanted to encourage our council and then also any, um, citizens who might be concerned about, especially after how the last CARES Act dollars were allocated. Uh, maybe, not maybe, please do email the commissioners of the UG and ask them to send the county money across the entire county and not just in Kansas City, Kansas, just urging them to, um, remember that Edwardsville and Bonner Springs is also a part of Wyandotte County. So hopefully we'll see some of that money in our city as well, and that's all I've got. Thanks, guys.
Okay, thank you all very much for your contributions, and we are adjourned.